Public are in getting in now. We do have, I need to contact Brian Baker. Looks like they're still streaming their other video. I'm gonna have them stop streaming. Just one minute, please. All right, we could start. Thank you for waiting.
Okay, we are now live. Call to order the May 26th meeting of the common council. If you all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll and read the prepared statement.
Please be advised this meeting is being taped for YouTube broadcast. The meeting will also be closed captioned. It's important that everyone speak clearly into the microphones and only one person speak at a time. Mr. Burnett.
President.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Langella.
Here.
Mr. Sachinelli.
Present.
Ms.
Here.
Mr. Hulman.
Present.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Dumas. Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kides.
Here.
Mr. Theodore Reedies.
Here.
Mr. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Serenades.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Is Mr. Dumas on? No. Fourteen present, you have a quorum.
Could you call Mr. Dumas again? He might have unmuted himself because he was on our caucus meeting.
Right. I think I see his number.
Mr. Dumas? No.
I'm gonna ask him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the acceptance of the minutes of May 12th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I so move mayor Lisa Shanahan.
By Ms. Johnson. Any corrections, deletions, omissions, additions?
Mr. Mayor, Greg Burnett speaking. I have two, I have a few minor typo corrections.
Okay.
On page three of the minutes in the first paragraph, the last sentence, it says, it should be she asked A S K E D. In the in the sixth paragraph on the same page, it says dated Mary 11th, that should be May 11th. And then finally on page 11 of the minutes in the third paragraph on that page, the second sentence, it should be that should be there T H E R E. Except were delayed, not the those are the only minor corrections that I have.
Okay, does anybody else have any further corrections or additions or deletions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as corrected. Yeah, we could. Ms. King.
Mayor.
Sorry. It's Mr. Burnett. What's happening? Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Sorry, yes, I was muted.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hulman?
Hi.
Mr. Roberts?
Hi.
Mr. Dumas? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Bernie is blocked. I don't know.
Okay, he's here, though.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kides?
Yes.
Mr. Theodore Reedies?
Yes.
Mr. Serenades?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
I have fourteen voting.
Wish we can carry unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Have we received any correspondence relative to public participation?
No, we have not. I haven't.
And is there anybody that is waiting to speak, Mr. Manzi?
There are three people from the public. Maybe Mr. Dumas is one of them. Does his number end in five, five, oh, Darlene?
No, yes, six, five, five, zero. He's blocked.
Okay, I will put him through.
Thank you.
He is unmuted. If anyone from the public would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now and I will unmute.
Hello?
Yeah, that's Mr. Dumas talking right now.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, got it.
Any other public comment, Mr. Manzi?
No, I see none.
Okay, said that I will close public participation. There are no resignations or appointments. Let's see, there is, under Mayor's remarks, we, as many of you know, regarding the city executive order and the governor's executive order, we have moved into phase one of our reopening plan. And we opened up parking to the beach with 500 spots, which is 50% capacity for Norwalk residents only. And we have also arranged for 50 spots for non-Norwalk residents offsite at Taylor Farm. We have had a very successful application process for our restaurants for outdoor dining based on what I believe Leisha just updated me earlier and all of you. We've had somewhere in the area of 50 applications online. We've expedited the process so that it doesn't become cumbersome or too mired down in red tape. And we have applied, approved somewhere in the area of 47 of those applications. So it's been very, very successful. We are following very closely the governor's reopening plan. And our reopening plan focuses mainly on city amenities, city buildings, and so forth. Our walk-up window at City Hall has been very successful for people wishing to register their vehicles so that they can park at the beach for paying taxes and for doing other kinds of things that people need to do and our essential services for City Hall remain active. Now, from time to time, in order to update, as you know, we update the common council on a relatively regular basis to make sure that you're aware of what's happening in the city of Norwalk as in regards to the coronavirus and where we are at any given time. And from time to time, I do like to invite staff to make a presentation to give you a, an update from their perspective as to the kinds of things they're doing. And tonight I've invited the chief of community services, Mr. Lamond Daniels, who is here. So if you indulge me, I'll ask Mr. Daniels to briefly address the council with some of the things from his perspective. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be before you, common council members. I do have a presentation that I'm going to now share with you all that I'll be referring to for today. So just give me one. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Great. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, thank you again. I'm really excited to be before you and also both to share with you the common council and the Norwalk public, our constituents, that our department continues to be on the forefront and on the ground looking at the variety of needs and services so that we as a city, as a municipality, can support the needs in light of the pandemic. So I'll run through this very quickly, but I'll start by saying that, you know, with the mayor, one of the, one of the, one of the areas that the mayor asked me to really look into was food. And for those that have heard me speak on one of the common council, excuse me, one of the town hall meetings with the mayor and also the times I've been interviewed by the, the hour, people ask, you know, what are, what are you seeing as the pressing need? And again, I will say again, the need for food and for a variety of reasons. We know the pandemic, not only because of people that are impacted because they may be ill or positive, but also I am aware and have been in contact with many residents who have lost their jobs and are struggling. So just want to share kind of where we are from the community services perspective. And I also want to acknowledge our Madam Chair Barbara Smith, who's the chair of the Community Services Committee. And so just quickly, just to refresh our memory, the community services, our mission is simple, to increase and sustain the social well-being of health of all Norwalk residents. And this is the org chart that, that in, under the, under the Community Services Department, Fair Rent Human Relations, you really human services was consistent of youth services, early childhood, library and health department. And then we work in close collaboration with the Fair Housing and our elderly. And then on my left-hand corner, which may be on your right-hand corner, working directly with the local nonprofits. And for the benefit of this presentation, I'm going to share what that work looks like in, under the pandemic. And so clearly coming on board, you know, we are taking a leadership role and we are positioned to, let me move my, my face because I'm in the way. Okay. There we go. That's better. And we are, we are in a position to make a significant contribution to assist how our residents seek and learn about the social services and resources in our community. And being upon my arrival, I've had an opportunity to meet with many, many executive leaders and of nonprofit social services to really understand what the needs are and how the city and what role the municipality can play. So we are well positioned to take on that role. And then the third bullet is specifically around becoming the front door to serve as that access point to all Norwalkers. So through my department, they will know what services are available to them. And so is, and under the pandemic, you know, we are exhibiting leadership, creating a forum to raise awareness of the food security issues. I spend a lot of my time helping coordinate, helping strategize and helping executing where the need is. And we have built a network of individuals and agencies and elected officials to develop and advocate policy around food. Just recently, we held a call, thank, in thanks to Senator Bob Duff with the Commissioner, Brian Hobart, who is the Commissioner of Agriculture and the Food czar. So he now knows what we're doing in Norwalk. We have a relationship with his department to ensure that whatever we need and what resources and services, to the extent that they're available, we are now in direct contact with our state commissioner to ensure that Norwalk is not forgotten. And so there is a network of Norwalk service providers. I won't read the whole thing, but you'll see that I did highlight the concrete basic needs. And we know that the basic needs are food and shelter. Those are the two largest issues that many of Norwalks are facing because of the pandemic. And so my simple goal is this, to facilitate communication, collaboration and the integration, the working together so that we can ensure all Norwalkers have access to food. And so since COVID-19, you know, as I, as I talk about this a lot, the need for food has been amplified because we know that people, many people, just not in Norwalk, but in the surrounding communities, people were struggling already. But we know because of the COVID-19, the needs and the, and the ability to get food has only exacerbated. So that, that need is real. The demand is real. And so I'm really excited and I'm going to give a shout out to Norwalk Acts because when, when the mayor asked me to really go deep into, how do we make sure people are eating and people are getting food, Norwalk Acts, through the collective acts program, they have the data. So it was just a perfect marriage for me to talk with Norwalk Acts to understand the data. We know where people are. We know what the community's needs are. We know who, what community is faring as compared to other communities. We have real data that is localized to understand the needs and then think about what are the services, strategies or resources that, that we should be deploying into these communities. And so the Health Department last year threw a Campbell soup grant, the, which is the parent arm of, of the place, I'm forgetting the name. Oh, boy, they make the nice cookies. Can't remember the name. Thank you, though. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to make sure I give them credit because they gave us the money. So we have a report that was, that was executed from Fairfield University that studied our city so that not only we know and we think we know what to do, but this report, the data just validates kind of what we should be doing. And so there's a lot of, I'm going to move quickly because I have a lot of, a lot of graphs. But I think that the takeaway today is that we're looking at the data, we're understanding from neighborhood to neighborhood, from community to community, where the needs are. So this data just simply says, where, where are communities struggling with food insecurity? And when we talk about food insecurity, we're talking about an algorithm that, that, that the food insecurity world uses to begin to identify where the needs are. And that looks at, you know, where the nerves grocery store, you know, income, the amount of healthy food in that community. And they developed this algorithm to then to determine that this community is food insecure. Well, we, we know where our seniors are and our seniors are also struggling with food insecurity issues. And so this is just another map of our city to help us understand where are the seniors compared to food insecure. And so the big thing, you know, what have we been doing since the COVID-19 crisis? Well, one of the things that the city has taken a leadership role is that we have developed the Norwalk Food Delivery Program. That has been launched. It's specifically designed where residents, Norwalkers who have been impacted because of COVID-19, they do not have enough money to, to buy groceries. They may not have family resources or they may not have transportation. And they're okay with getting food from the pantries through the emergency response team volunteer group, which is made up of hundreds of folks. Norwalkers are helping their friendly neighbors. This is a coordinated effort where Norwalkers can call in a number. And if they're okay with getting food from the local pantries, there is a system in place. It's been in place now for almost six weeks that we provide food to our residents who need it the most. And I was able to get some data. So today we served 135 families, but out of that 135 families, 450 Norwalkers have been served getting food at their door because of the Community Services Department. And for those that are listening publicly, I just want to just remind everyone that if you are an individual or family who's been impacted by COVID, please call this number 475-489-9119. That's in English and in Spanish. And this is, this is operated by the Alliance for Community Empowerment. They changed their name. The public must mostly know them as A B C D. So they recently went through a change name. And then our senior services, if you're age 60 and up, the Senior Services Coordinating Council and the Senior Center both offer free food and free delivery to our seniors. So my message is no senior or no resident should go without food. Our city has these services and they are available to them. And so one of the areas that the mayor has also asked me to look into is that we've partnered with the Norwalk Public Schools. We know that the Norwalk Public Schools through the Emergency Food Program has, have sites across the city. And we've been able to, again, using data, work with Dr. Frank Costanza's office to identify where is that need? We want to put food sites where the need is. And this is just a map through Norwalk Acts that is local. That tells us this is where children are located in our city and this is where the need is. And staff member Darlene Young and I have been going out into the community, kind of validating these needs. And this is just a quick snapshot of, we, the school site started with eight. We now are up to 15. And we're going to continue to grow that. I'll let the school share kind of what those plans are. But the message I want to share today is that there's no cost to any child or young person under the age of 18 to two years old, and you can visit any site and get food Monday through Friday. Another area that there is initiative from the Health Department that since I got on board, I'm just enhancing and strengthening it because again, we want to ensure that there's food in our community. So I'll kind of move through these slides, but just for the purpose of this conversation, I want to share with you that there is a formal strategy in how we're looking at this because we know that after COVID-19 or whatever this looks like, the need is still going to be here. So it will be my office that will be responding in real time with the local nonprofits and social services community across the city to ensure that Norwalkers do not fall through the cracks because of the impact of COVID-19. And this is just a list of the many community members that are as part of this group, looking at the food access issues in our city, which is led by Teresa Argendezzi from the Health Department. And so again, making it real for what, what are our partners saying? Well, per, well, person to person reports that they have seen a 50% increase in demand in their pantry. And they've also seen over 150% increase in demand for rental assistance, assistance. These are real. So it's important that through my department, we work together, we work in concert and collaborate to ensure that we can support the organizations. The Salvation Army, they estimated there's a 35% to 40% increase in demand since COVID-19. And then open door shelter, they have seen a 30% increase. So what does that look like on the ground? Well, one of the things that we've learned is that the food, and you've heard it through the media, food is very difficult to source due to, due to a lot of factors. I won't get into it. You know, you know, you can debate the issue, but we, what we do though is the food is not getting to Norwalk. So that, that's a fact. And so we're working with the Connecticut Food Bank. If you, if you heard, you know, Norwalk used to get three deliveries per week and, and from Connecticut Food Bank. We're only getting one. That's real and it's impacted because the need is greater. And so my office led, so what we're doing, we were leading quite a few initiatives. So there's a program that's called Blessing Boxes out of Pennsylvania. Today, we have brought in 1,000 boxes. That's over 3,000 meals and almost 500 pounds of food. And yeah, you see in the left-hand corner, you see the bear right there. Want to give, put the bear's picture in for coming out, but these, these are over, over 45 to 50 pounds of food that through our office. And basically, why, why my department is so critical at this point? People need help coordinating and executing the plan. So I often find myself being the convening and the coordinating lead in getting these activities done because there's so many different activities. But people, people need some guidance and some leadership of how to do it. And then you all are very familiar with the large food distribution that we just did on May 14th in Norwalk. Well, the Connecticut Food Bank led the charge. It was funded by a private donor that specifically wanted to do this in Fairfield County. But again, our department led, 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 led the activities in coordinating with the city departments to make this a very, a successful event. And it was, it's deemed the largest food distribution program to date so far. Which again, which is only exemplifies the need and why, you know, we're, we're critical in these efforts. And I, and I just want to say, you know, so who's helping with this? So St. Philip's Church, so this is a collaborative effort. But again, my department is bringing everyone to the table. So I just want to just make mention to definitely the key people, you know, the St. Philip's Church, Pastor Liz over at Cornerstone Community United Methodist Church, our friends over at Fairfield County Community Foundation. There's a anonymous donor in Norwalk that said, I want to do something in the city. And while we don't know who they are, but I definitely want to say thank you to your efforts. The Alliance for Community Empowerment, Norwalk Community Benefit Fund. And then I also want to recognize, as we all know, there are citizens, friendly neighbors and community groups across the city that is helping stepping up, whether through, you know, local school programs, PTA groups. But the, the beauty of this is that we're all talking and, and looking at how to best do this in a way that no one is forgotten in this time. This is just a list of the local pantries that I hold a weekly call every week, coordinating where they are with their inventory, where they're lacking and what kind of supports they may, maybe need. And how can we look at the philanthropy community for support? And then also, just so you all know from my department, I hold weekly calls with a variety of groups. So I'm on the phone with our senior servant organizations weekly. I hold the 8:30 call every Friday morning with all the nonprofits. The mayor spoke to them a couple of weeks ago. I'm very involved in the homeless shelter organizations. I emphasize the food access. We talked about the school and community food sites. Mental health and well-being, you know, people are staying home and I'm a social worker by education. So we're, we're talking about that and I want to continue to elevate the resources from a mental health and well-being perspective because people are struggling and in having, and partnering now with our domestic violence group in Norwalk because we are seeing those numbers are getting high and, and providing resources of how to share and educate individuals who are victimized, but because now you're, you're in, you're in close quarters with that abuser, you know, there are services. I want to encourage anyone that's listening, again, visit our website. The resources are there. And then, you know, we're, we're very grateful that the governor has created the, you know, moratorium on evictions. But what's going to happen afterwards? We're, our department through Hammer Human Relations and Fair Rent, we're creating, you know, FAQ. So, so tenants know their rights so that if, whatever situation they may find them in, you know, we want to make sure that whatever happens is done legal, it's done legally. And so again, you know, we're always looking for volunteers. There's always a need for volunteers. So if, if folks can look at the website and for those of you in your particular districts, as your constituents ask, can I help? Tell them yes. Go on the website and register as a volunteer. And Donna from the ERT program will link them to a volunteer opportunity. We have a formalized system. And I want to thank the IT department. They created this system for us. It was brand new. It was brand new. Again, partnering with our departments, strategizing in the time of need and figuring out how to best serve our community. And we're going to keep these resources up. They're not going to go away after, after all this happens. And so lastly, you know, what are we doing? We're working closely, the city of Norwalk through my department, we're working closely with all agencies. We're keeping up to date with information on our website, whether it's the city food sites, the student meal sites and additional resources to ensure Norwalkers have a place to go to identify if they need help. You can count on the city's website to keep accurate and updated information. So thank you, Mayor. That's what I have. And thank you for sharing and giving me an opportunity to share with both the common council and the public what our department is doing.
Thank you, Lamond. I want to thank Lamond because, and also the council, because you supported the reorganization to include a position, the Chief of Community Services. And you can see just what Lamond has done in the short time that he's been here. We never had a clue that this coronavirus would be upon us. But it is. And Lamond has been remarkable. You can see one of the main things that we're concerned about in Norwalk is food insecurity. And we're looking to do everything we can to help feed people who need food. We've identified where the greatest number, where the greatest need is in our city. We've identified where the greatest number of seniors are. Lamond is working with all the nonprofits on a regular basis to figure out how we can increase the services that we provide. But as you know, this is a very challenging time and we are continuing to figure out how we can continue to feed people, continue to help them with their needs. And the community services position or social services position in the city of Norwalk has been long lacking in our community because there was nobody overseeing and bringing together all the nonprofits to help do what Lamond is doing. So again, this is a remarkable, Lamond, you are a wonderful asset. You've been a wonderful team member. And again, we, we truly, truly appreciate that. And we will continue to do everything we can to feed more people. I'm looking, we're looking to the state of Connecticut to help us with assistance for people who can't pay their rent. We want to prevent people from being evicted from their homes because they can't pay their rent. So we're moving forward and a, a lot of it, and Lamond is really the, the center of all this, getting this done. So if anybody has any questions of Lamond before we move on. Seem Lamond, thank you for all that you do.
So Mayor, Mayor, Mayor?
Yes.
Can you hear me? So I, I just want to say that I echo your comments about Lamond, and I don't know how appropriate it is, but I, I have to say that Lamond is the right person for this job. And as you said, who would have ever known that this would be his trial by fire? It really, he has risen to the top and has the energy and the compassion for the people to get this done for the city of Norwalk. And, and it's a great thing. It's a very good thing that's happening here.
Thank you for mentioning that, Darlene. And Lamond is very, very passionate about his position. You can tell.
Yes.
You can tell. All right, well, thank you, Lamond, again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on, I will pass it over to the council president, Ms. Smith, for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to take a moment to thank you, Lamond, for the presentation and for your tireless work, making sure that our most vulnerable citizens have their needs met. And I just, you know, I just want to point out too, that, you know, so many of us are insulated from how really, really difficult it is for people. You know, we're working from our homes, we're still being paid, we're ordering our groceries. But you know, through this presentation, you can really see how much food insecurity and how much people are suffering. So Lamond, thank you for your, for your efforts and I feel honored to chair the Community Services Committee and work with you closely. The consent calendar will be read by me tonight. So I will, we're moving the first item to the end of the, the consent calendar. So under item seven A, Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs Committee, item one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an amendment to Atlas Pyrovision Entertainment Group, Inc., for the annual fireworks display to extend their contract to include the July 3, 2021, with a rain date of July 5, 2021, and July 3, 2022, with a rain date of July 5, 2022, display for a sum not to exceed $43,500 for each year. All remaining terms of the agreement to remain unchanged. Account noted. Item seven B1, under Finance, accept and approve the report of the Claims Committee dated May 14, 2020. Item seven B2, for information purposes only, narrative on tax collections dated May 14, 2020. Item seven B3, for informational purposes only, monthly tax collector's report dated April 2020. Item seven B4, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to submit an application to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Grant for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, which is approximately $65,000. Item seven, seven B5, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to submit an application to the State of Connecticut for grant funds provided under the State of Connecticut's Local Capital Improvement Fund for Local Capital Improvement Program, with an entitlement for 2020 of $647,076. Item seven B7, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a contract with Shipman and Goodwin LLP to provide bond counsel services with pricing for services based upon the proposal submitted by Shipman and Goodwin to the city of, on January 28, 2020, as amended by the May 1, 2020 email from Brass Bruce Chudwick. Account noted. Item seven C1, under Public Works Committee, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into a temporary right of access and entry agreement with Sono TOD LLC to enter over a certain portion of 30 Monroe Street for construction access purposes. And that is the consent calendar and I'll call a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Yes, I.
Ms. Johnson?
I.
Mr. Langella?
I.
Mr. Sachinelli?
I.
Mr. Hoovleman?
I.
Mr. Roberts?
I.
Mr. Dumas?
Hi.
Ms. Young? Ms. Young? Yes, sorry, I knew you were there. Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Mr. Theodridis?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Serenides?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
And myself, Ms. Smith, yes. Consent calendar is unanimous, approved unanimously. And then we have one more item in which we need to allow Mr. Keegan to recuse himself.
Please note that Mr. Keegan has left the building.
Okay, just a moment. All right, under item six A, Corporation Council, Authorization for Discussion Settlement, Jasmine Turner versus Norwalk Police Department in Executive Session. I'll just call the roll call on that. Again, Mr. Burnett?
I.
Ms. Johnson?
I.
Mr. Langella?
I.
Mr. Sachinelli?
I.
Mr. Hoovleman?
I.
Mr. Roberts?
I.
Mr. Dumas?
Hi.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Mr. Theodridis?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan? Oh, sorry, he's out. Mr. Serenides?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
And myself, Ms. Smith, it is unanimous. And I will turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burnett, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Greg Burnett speaking. I am, I am under Finance, item seven B6, we have the approval first A of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Parking Authority Budget. And we have on the call to present the highlights of the budget, Catherine Hebert, who is Director of Transportation, Mobility and Parking. The Transportation Department has been extremely flexible during the coronavirus timeframe in terms of where they provided free parking. They've made necessary updates and changes to allow access. And Catherine will highlight some of the items going forward in their upcoming budget.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett, and welcome, everybody. I have given this presentation some format about three times to the Parking Authority, the Board of Estimate and Finance Committee. So I will, and some of you have heard it, so I will give it again, trying to get through it quickly because I know you have other things to do. So the budget that, that you have before you for approval, the Parking Authority approved the fiscal year 21 operating budget, February 26, 2020, pre-COVID. That budget compared to the current year budget showed a minus 0.32% decrease for a total budget of $7,320,748. And that approved budget made revenue and expense assumptions based on multi-year activity demand that each facility, seasonality and empirical data pre-COVID. Obviously, things have changed. So in, like Mr. Burnett said, in response to COVID pandemic, which began March 18, 20, when the governor and the mayor announced business closures and work from home policies, the Parking Authority suspended enforcement, suspended parking fees through May 2020, reduced budgeted expenses $2 million and, which may require further reductions, furloughed 39% of staff while continuing to provide essential services for about 4,300 on and off-street parking and 11 city-owned parking assets, including garages and open lots. The Parking Authority approved the use of some of their accrued fund balance from the end of fiscal year 19, which was $2,840,024. What they approved the use of is shortfalls of, the use of 1 million, of that $2 million, $1,446,604 to help cover projected expense shortfalls. That money, pre-COVID, was to, was going to be used to assist the city with economic development initiatives and parking programs and projects that were part of the Parking Authority's strategic plan. So now we're into reopening recovery. The governor and the mayor announced May 20th to start phase one of the state and citywide opening. And clearly, this has been quite a dynamic situation, which changes weekly, sometimes daily. The Parking Authority does meet every two weeks since March and has discussed several scenarios. The recovery or reopening plan, if you will, will balance the financial impact to the Parking Authority budget and responsibility to manage 11 city-owned parking assets and on-street parking, the responsibility to include a net budget and to include economic development initiatives that assist the businesses with their reopen plans. So these include programs, touchless payment options such as pay-by-sell expansion, text-to-pay, online prepaid reservations at the Maritime Garage in the South Norwalk Railroad Station, visible cleaning and disinfecting of all facilities and structures, flexible parking, expanding 15-minute parking to accommodate outdoor dining and curbside pickup and delivery and add parking spaces where possible. So along those lines, like I said, we are now in this very dynamic, changing environment. Last week, the Parking Authority took 28 active, very active parking spaces out of service to collaborate with the city to install outdoor dining and curbside pickup and delivery. So this just happened. The revenue impact to those 28 parking spaces during the outdoor dining period through October 15th is about $50,000. Again, dynamic situation, the Parking Authority will be meeting on a regular basis and evaluating activity and adjusting and changing the budget as we all go through this transition.
Thank you, Catherine. If there's no questions, I'd like to call the motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Parking Authority Budget.
Sorry. Mr. Burnett?
I.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Langella?
I.
Mr. Sachinelli?
I.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hoovleman?
I.
Mr. Roberts?
I.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Mr. Theodridis?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Serenides?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, can I continue to the next item?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The next item under item six is item B, which is the approval of fiscal year 2020, 2021 WPCA budget. And we have President Ralph Koepp, who is the Senior Engineer for WPCA, to give highlights of their upcoming budget. One of the key actions has been the, they've changed service providers for the better. And Ralph will give an update on their upcoming budget activity.
All right. Hello, everyone. The Norwalk WPCA is an enterprise fund that manages the city's wastewater facilities. Revenues are generated through suruse fees. Our fiscal year 2021 budget includes a $7 rate increase for a single-family residence and an overall blended rate increase of approximately 2% over the previous fiscal year. The, the biggest news is that Suez is our new contract operator. On September 16th of 2019, the WPCA Board executed a service agreement with Suez for initial term of 10 years with two additional five-year renewal options. On May 18th, Suez took over the operations from OMI Inc., who had previously operated the facility for 20 years. Leading up to Suez taking over was a two-year procurement process, which WPCA Board and staff, we created a subcommittee consisting of representatives of the mayor's office, our CFO, a WPCA consultant, WPCA staff, and of course, WPCA board members. After two years, we, besides reviewing RFPs, we actually went, did site visits. I do want to give a shout out to Lou Clark, who's the Vice Chairman of the WPCA. And he actually attended a bunch of the site visits with us personally. With the closeout of OMI, one of the big key, key items was we worked with With the closeout of OMI, one of the big key items was we worked with them to replace approximately 125 pieces of equipment at the treatment plant and pump stations, which included a lot of the pumps, mixers and drive units that hadn't been replaced since the 90s or even before. The WPCA is self-funded regarding bonding. There's no bonding request for this coming year for capital. Key highlights and revenues were expected, we anticipated about a little bit over $150,000 in nitrogen credits from the Connecticut DEP for 2019. And on the expenditure side, fees, O&amp;M fees did increase with new service contract. But the contract does emphasize asset preservation, enhanced operations and high-quality effluent. We also have a decrease in expenditures with professional legal services accounts due to closeout of the existing agreement and the entering of the new agreement. And the last thing is decrease in debt service. So from the 1990s, our debt service is coming off the box.
Great. Thank you, Ralph. I don't know if there's any questions?
Greg, can I just add something really quick?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'd just like to compliment the WPCA and the team and the city team involved. After a very diligent search, they chose SUEZ for obvious reasons. They're a great organization. They share the same environmental beliefs and concerns that we have, which is wonderful. But a little bit more, they also, after, after being selected and coming onboard and starting before the contract even started, being here present and getting to know the staff and the facility, they made a very generous donation to the city, well, not to the city directly, but to Norwalk Hospital in the form of 1,595 masks, $10,000 to the Norwalk Hospital, an additional $10,000 to the Connecticut Food Bank, which I thought was very generous. And I hope it helps with the presentation that Mr. Daniels gave earlier today about the food shortage we're having. And I'm very confident that this was a good choice as far as the SUEZ goes. And Ralph, keep up the good work over there.
So with that, I'd like to move the motion for approval of Item B, which is the approval of the fiscal year 2020-2021 WPCA Budget.
Mr. Burnett?
Hi.
Ms. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Langella?
Hi.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Hi.
Mr. Roberts?
Hi.
Mr. Dumas?
Hi.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Mr. Theodridis?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Sirinidis?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Ralph.
Mr. Burnett, the next item?
The final item under the Finance category, 7, Item 7B8 Resolution, approved special capital appropriation totaling $1,642,470 to increase the available funds in the Board of Education Capital Project Number, as noted, instructional technology for the purchase of e-tablet computers for students and teachers in grades K through 8. This is an additional appropriation to create an environment whereby every student in the Norwalk Public School system will have some type of IT equipment for distance learning, being it an iPad, a Chromebook or laptop, as well as teachers also having laptop equipment if necessary. And we have on the council meeting today, the Chief Financial Officer, Tom Hamilton, to provide the details.
Okay, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can tell.
Okay, great. This is Tom Hamilton. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Norwalk Public Schools. I want to thank you for taking up this item tonight. We have joining us tonight the Chair of the Board of Education Finance Committee, Barbara Meyer Mitchell. I'll ask her to provide some additional comments after I introduce the item. We also have Ralph Valancisi, who is our Chief of Technology and Partnerships. And he is also on the call or on the meeting, and he can certainly provide backup on any detailed types of questions that you may have. So just to, you know, give you a little bit of background, of course, we're all dealing with really an unprecedented circumstance with the COVID-19 pandemic, which has had, you know, the most dramatic impact on the way all of us conduct business. And the Norwalk Public Schools is certainly no exception. We were really thrown with virtually no notice into a distance learning environment for our 12,000 students. We had really less than a week to prepare for that. And I think by all measure, the district has really done an outstanding job in continuing to provide such vital education services to all of our students. The mayor has been a tremendous supporter of the public schools, and we're grateful and thankful for his leadership and support. And through his efforts, we were able to make available a number of the units, the technology that Mr. Burnett was referring to in terms of making Chromebooks available to many of our students. We repurposed the units we had and essentially put in place as close to a one-to-one environment as we could get with the funding we had available. But unfortunately, we didn't get completely to one-to-one. So for a number of our younger grades, we have been relying on photocopying and mailing learning packets every two weeks to our students at the youngest grades. And that has turned out to be a little problematic, or more than a little problematic, because we've had some difficulty with mail delivery and you can't provide the same kind of instruction through a photocopied learning packet that you can with, you know, with a device. So the appropriation that is before you is really to move the district to a full one-to-one environment, meaning one device for each student. So whether it's a Chromebook or a laptop or an iPad or a tablet, every student would have their own device. And that is really crucial for the full rollout and implementation of distance learning. And we're preparing ourselves both for summer school, which will be starting on July 6, and starting in a modified environment, which is partially distance-based and partially building-based. And we are preparing for the possibility that as this pandemic plays out over the course of the next 12 to 18 months, that we need to be prepared for the possibility that we may be in a distance learning environment again, or we may be in an environment that requires us to have some sort of hybrid. So for instance, right now, we know the state has just recently come out with some standards about summer school, which are going to limit the number of students in any classroom to no more than 10 students. And so we'll be doing some remote learning and some in-building learning. So that is why this appropriation is so critical, so that we can get to where we need to be in terms of the one-to-one devices. I'm going to stop there, ask the Chair of our Finance Committee, Barbara Meyer Mitchell, if she'd like to make a few comments. And then Ralph, anything we've missed? If you can fill in from there.
Thank you, Tom. I just want to thank the mayor and Board of Estimate and Taxation and the Planning Commission for approving this, which will allow us to have the flexibility to respond to whatever develops into the fall. One of the challenges with the paper packets that we've experienced is that we can't differentiate our instruction based on students' needs. And we can't provide the kind of live teaching, synchronous teaching that we know is the cornerstone of education. Education is not packets. Education is teachers working with students. And I think everybody knows that. So thank you so much for considering this and enabling us to really be a leader in our state for how to do this with honor and dignity.
I can make a couple of comments as well. I mean, one of the things, I know that Lamont talked about earlier, was food access. And the, this, I can't thank the common council and the mayor enough. One of the things that you find out in a crisis like this is disparities in equity. And these, these devices will also help to kind of bridge that gap in that area of equity for our students to make sure that we can deliver, you know, a solid educational opportunity for all of our kids. So, and also bring it to the families as well. So, thanks.
So Mr. Burnett has moved the item. Is there any further discussion from the council members? Mr. Keegan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have some questions that I hope can be answered. I'm struggling a little bit with this appropriation. I'm not totally comfortable with, with it. Does, can somebody, somebody tell me what currently we have in our inventory? How many Chromebooks or iPads do we have presently?
Well, with this influx, you want to know what we have currently?
I want to, yeah, I want to do the arithmetic. How many do we have? And how many kids do we have? And how many do we need?
Yeah. So currently, the machines that can actually be used for this purpose, I don't have the exact number in front of me right now, but we're filling, we're literally filling the gap. So the difference between what you're actually providing and what we actually have, we should have about a 15% overage to be able to kind of backfill when we need it, when we, when we do need it. But that will be something that we'll need throughout the years. Well.
That's in the event that one of them gets, whether damaged or broken or isn't working, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. The other question I had was, these tablets are going into homes throughout the city. What are, what are we doing about internet access or whatever's required Wi-Fi? I pay a lot of money to Optimum myself, and my Wi-Fi doesn't work. So I'm just concerned that, you know, maybe, you know, getting these tablets out to the kids, and they may not work.
Yeah. So we've, we've actually been working closely with Altice. And I got to say, it's a kudos to Altice for stepping up with us. All the machines that we've sent home so far, they've actually taken our MAC addresses, which is the serial number to the machine, and connected it to their public Wi-Fi. Does that work 100% of the time? No, it doesn't. But we also have been backfilling. We work with Sprint, so we're part of what's called the 1 Million Project. And we have hotspots that we send home to students that are in need as well. We currently have, I believe, about 300, a little over 300 hotspots out there currently for students that have, actually need that access. But we constantly are reviewing that to figure out exactly where those issues are. You know, one of the things that we do need to, I'll be having the conversation with Altice is, there are, there are some like dead spots within the city. And is there a way that we can actually work with them to be able to help that? Because the fact that we have public Wi-Fi, really, we want to capitalize on that for our students.
And my last comment or question would have to do with the children themselves. As I understand, these tablets are going to be given to kindergarteners?
The Dell tablets, yes. And they're, they're. Yes.
Yeah. Do we have any research about how successful this has been in any other school districts where it's been tried, where they've used this kind of a concept? Not necessarily because they had to do distance learning, but they used these tablets as a method of instruction? What was the success rate? Or is this just, you know, a $1.6 million experiment? I mean, I'm not sure whether we can be assured it's going to work or not.
Yeah, no. So with the tools that we're using within the tablets, the tablets are a delivery mechanism for us to be able to deliver our curriculum. So the curriculum has been vetted in many places. And any of the curriculum that we use is actually research-based and put into place for that purpose. At the younger grade levels, what we do know is that a lot of times, you need a visual representation and not, not just having a packet, but having a way for the teacher to connect to that family, to that student, is critical. So having these types of devices are really critical to be able to teach or to be able to continue teaching. As, you know, Mrs. Meyer Mitchell had mentioned, the one thing that we want to do is we want to let teachers still teach. And we've been training them and making sure that they can do that. They do need a means to be able to connect. And that is one of the skills that we teach kids with, with digital learning, is the idea of how do you make that connectivity happen? So there is research behind the curriculum that we use.
Ralph, the other thing I would say in addition is, this is not the first place where this has been tried. In fact, the, our suburban neighbors went into the COVID-19 situation with already at a one-to-one ratio and had devices for all of their students right on down to the youngest grades. So this is not, you know, something that has not been tried. That in fact, the reports from those communities is that it's been very successful. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
If I could make, I have a comment and a question, just to address one of Mr. Keegan's questions. You know, as a teacher in the district myself, the platform that we use for our classes is Google Meet. And if students have internet problems, there's a phone number that they can call in. And so I have had students who've had internet glitches call in and at least listen. It's not ideal, you know, and I know the IT department is, and the district is working to make sure that there is internet access with hotspots and everything. But there is that backup. And they wouldn't have that otherwise. And then the other thing that I wanted to, to really add to is how much those, the K through 2 kids really need to see their teachers. You know, I, I see my students every single day. I'm live with them every single day. And they're teenagers. And, you know, they don't necessarily want to see me every day, right? But the little kids, they really need that. They need the connection with their teacher. So I think that that's really important.
Thank you. Sorry.
And I just had a question, which is, I did see in the appropriation that there are notebooks for teachers. So I just wanted to hear a little bit about that. You know, I use my laptop. And I, I would personally want to continue using my laptop. So I just want to hear a little bit about how those notebooks might be used.
So the K5, we wanted to make sure that the K5 teachers are using the same types of devices also that students are, so they can actually replicate, model what they're doing in school as well as at home. We know that we also need a refresh in our schools. I mean, a lot of the technology. And we did have a lot of teachers that came to us and were saying that they need, they need different type of technology, whether they didn't have a camera in their, in their laptop or device that they had. So we wanted to make sure that everybody actually had the devices that they need. Does that mean that at times when a teacher's home and they wanted to use a bigger screen? And, you know, work off of that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a problem for them to access their materials that way. But, but we want to make sure that they actually have a device that they can use. And that, that would also be what they're expected to use in school as well, too.
Mr. Huberman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of, a comment and a couple of quick questions. One is, I commend the Norwalk Public Schools and what you guys have been doing. The leap that we've all seen you take moving forward. I have a child in the district. I have a child in the district. And you guys are doing amazing stuff. And you're staying out in front. And I feel like that this is potentially one of those staying out in front moments, which is fantastic. And I want to see this move forward and continue because I think that there isn't one of us here that doesn't wonder what the future is going to bring. And we know that the future is really uncertain right now. You know, July 6th for summer school, but that date may not happen depending upon what happens between now and middle of June and those types of things. That said, does this go far enough? Does this give you the tools for the eventuality that you could have split, you know, a hybrid-type system for learning in the fall? We could go back into, into distance learning models? Does this give you enough of the resources to make sure that that happens? That's one question I have. And another question I have is that this long-term, the relationship right now with Altice, the hotspots, is this going to continue? Do we have assurances that this will continue? Because if we venture down the path of creating a technological model like this, we have to make sure that it is sustainable. And so, that's a big question I have. And my, the reason I ask these questions is, the concern that I have is we start pouring money into a technology and we start, we have to remember that we still have a great deal of social-emotional learning issues within the district right now that I think are going to come up and going to need to be addressed as you move forward. So, I would hate to see us back here dealing with technology again when we've spent this much money dealing with the technology now.
Yeah, so let me, let me see if I can break that up and answer the questions in a way. So, to answer the first question of whether or not we were prepared for next year, I believe that, you know, I guess, I can definitely say that I can answer that as yes with this influx of funding, so that we can make sure that we can come up with a variety of different models. We're also looking at planning for professional development for teachers. We're really changing the way that we work moving forward as a whole. And I think one of the things that we've seen, you know, out of this crisis is that we all have to operate a little bit differently. One of the things I just talked about earlier tonight in our Curriculum and Instruction meeting was the fact that we've never talked about having online office hours, whether it's technology or others, to be able to support other teachers. We now do. And that's something that's going to continue into the future. So, we expect that our model of practice of how we teach will end up changing with this as well. We are also looking at Internet access for all students. So, we are in conversation with Altice. One of the things that's coming into legislation right now, if you're familiar, we actually get a lot of E-Rate funding for the district to pay for our Internet access. Two years ago, legislation was made with the FCC that took out the option of student home access as E-Rate fundable. That's back on the table. There's been a lot of lobbying recently because we're seeing this as a national issue. So, we hope that there'll be a way for me to apply for E-Rate to help offset the cost for our students that actually need that. So, that if it was normally, let's say, Altice can give public Wi-Fi access to a student for, you know, $5 a student to be able to cover this. If it's covered at an 80% reimbursable rate, we can build that into our budget to make sure we develop that equity. So, that is one thing that we're looking at. And one of the reasons why I feel like it's important to move forward with Altice more so than hotspots, even though hotspots would also be covered under that same jurisdiction. So, we do, like I said, we're looking at options on how do we make it sustainable. One of the things we will have to look at, though, is the idea of a sustainability model within the next couple of years. Because this does mean that there will need to be a regular refresh now, just like with textbooks, that these devices will need to be updated on a regular basis. Does that kind of answer the questions?
Yes, thank you. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Langella? You're muted.
Sorry. Yes, I just want to echo everyone's sentiments as well, too. I think that, I mean, clearly, this could be the new norm for us. So, I don't disagree with anything. And I think we're going in the right direction. I think it's the right thing to do as well. I think, for me, I think maybe just to comment, and I may have missed this, so I'm sorry as well, too. But Councilman Keegan actually did bring up a pretty valid point as far as the arithmetic is concerned. Like, as far as the inventory, approving money usually would require some checks and balances. So, I mean, whether it's part of the surplus, you know, what's working, what's not working, what's out there, I think just from like the financial checks and balances, making sure that, you know, we do have a, you know, more thorough understanding of where that inventory is and what we need, what's part of the surplus, so we can stay ahead of it if this does become the new norm. But also equally feel a bit more sound when making a financial decision because those small numbers do add up to the tune of what we're seeing, which is $1.6 million.
So, maybe I should, I should have explained that we do have everything asset tagged down to the student. So, within the district for all of our units. And one of the things that we're actually adding into our student information system next year is a second module that will actually tie so that the teacher will be able, along with their grades, be able to see what device that student has. So, the accountability model becomes there as well. We'll be able, as we move towards site-based budgeting and we're looking at accountability at the building level, we can actually make sure that teacher's notes like, oh, you know, or if the student leaves the district, that they have a Dell that they need to return along with their textbooks and all of those pieces. So, we are putting that into place. And that will be part of our student information system. But like I said, I just don't have, I don't have our asset system in front of me right now to tell you those exact numbers. But we do have everything tagged down to every student that's received a device. We know exactly what serial number that is for that student.
Okay.
Can I add that I think that the city and the board are hoping, and the council leadership are hoping to meet more regularly? So, this is something that you can request from us and we can bring to a meeting for discussion. This is not our only opportunity to talk about it, for sure. Let's keep talking.
Perfect. Sounds good. And thank you.
Any further, I'm sorry. Any further questions? Ms. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions just to also follow up on some of my colleagues. First of all, I just wondered where the landscape would be in the coming months if our high schools are going to be part of receiving those laptops from the partnership from Connecticut? And if that's going to help kind of to Councilmember Keegan's point, put a buffer in so we won't be back here in, you know, X months? And then should I let you answer that? And I'll go to my next question.
Sure. So, the Chromebooks that are being used at the high schools will keep a small portion of those, a percentage of them, at the high schools as a backup. But the rest of them will actually be then reallocated to the middle schools down to grade three because that's where we actually use Chromebooks. So, yes, that is part of the plan.
Okay, great. So, then, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. And the Dalios indicated that all of the devices that were promised through the partnership will be delivered through the foundation. So, none of that will go away.
Great. So, that means we'll be getting X amount of Dell computers for Bryan McMahon and Norwalk High students in the fall. And that will help us keep the Chromebooks for the K through eight, is what I'm hearing?
Yep. 3,800, I think approximately are coming in.
Okay, great. Thank you for that confirmation. The other, the other piece I had spoke to, I think, a few points here. But I can imagine, like, all departments in the city and all aspects of what we're doing now, there will be a time when we can debrief and think about, I know this is going to happen on the city side, but just I'd love to know what the plans are just very initially about how you're going to debrief about distance learning, especially given that, like, we've heard from Lamont Daniels, we know this, that everything that's been made has been exacerbated by COVID. So, the digital divide was obviously something students felt every day that are now feeling even more. So, just curious as to know what the thinking is behind the, the study, if you, I want to use that word, of how this all rolled out and how it did or did not serve students, particularly those most in need.
We're working from a continuing design process. Every two weeks, we work from feedback to refine our strategy and improve each cycle. And we just conducted a panoramic survey district-wide. And it actually addressed beyond the educational outcomes, but also these other needs that Lamont touched on. Obviously, digital access, but food access, shelter, all of that. So, I think the board is working very hard to understand what our reentry is going to look like. And speaking to David's question, which we didn't quite touch on about social-emotional learning, I think that's very much on the forefront of our thinking. And I have spoken to the mayor already about the social work contract with Mid Fairfield Child Guidance that we had this past year that has been very successful in five schools. And it may be something where the city might want to expand that service to more schools because we know the need coming in is going to be very great.
Thank you for that follow. And I think, would this technology also be critical in potentially getting those services to students?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I do think, like I said, there's going to be a lot that's going to come out soon. I actually just led a, two things. I led a national speaking engagement over the last weekend. It was a virtual conference for Assistant Superintendent and Superintendents. And the topic that I led it on was what lessons are from COVID and how to expect your student outcomes. And I think everybody is in the same boat, whether we're talking about districts out in Ohio, we're talking districts out in California. We were all kind of like knowing that this is something that is really uncharted territory. We're all looking at how do we gather data around this? I also, I happen to teach at Fairfield University in the Educational Technology Department. And my capstone class this past semester, most of my students were actually in other districts around Connecticut and were in these instructional technology focus areas. And their capstone, we ended up changing it as soon as we went into this COVID mode of just not looking at doing it as a capstone project, but what are you doing for your district? And so, the conversations that came out of that, too, I would say that all of us are really looking at, I guess what I'm trying to lead at, lead to is, we're all trying to gather the right data to go back and reflect on this once we get through this. And we're starting to do that over the summer. We're going to continue to do that through next year. I do think that it's going to be a good 18 months, though. In about 18 months, you're going to really start to see what, what has come out of this and how have we changed our practice? And my biggest thing is, you know, I've been an advocate of digital learning for my whole career. This is what I do. One of the things is, I want to make sure that we don't go backwards. We're moving so far forward in what we could do with students and putting them into that right, having that opportunity now. We have the, we will have the devices. We'll have the instructional models that we're putting into place that we realize now that we need. Hopefully, what we see in the next couple of years through this data is that I think the way that we teach kids is going to change dramatically.
Thank you. Mr. Sachinelli, you have your hand raised.
Yes, sir. Just a quick question on the procurement process. Knowing that there's implications on supply chain coming out of the COVID crisis in China, will you be staggering the delay of this purchase to make sure you're maximizing the dollar? Or how's, how's that look?
Well, so I maximize, I tried to maximize the dollar. The reason we went with Dell is so we could, we could piggyback on the, on the Dalios pricing. So, that's what we did already. As we went to, we actually were able to talk to them and get them down in price to that point. But these were all under state contract. We were able to get it underneath the state contract. Yeah, so we did that. And they are also, we've given timelines of when they're shipping and when they're going to start to arrive. Our laptops will start to arrive as early as June, but it'll be through mid-July. The mid-July ones are the ones that are going to the high schools. Those will be given out in August after summer school, where we collect the Chromebooks back that they're using for summer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Hulman?
I'm sorry. Just one quick question that I have from, we just approved a capital budget with a $517,000 line item for instructional technology. How does this impact that? Is that going away? Is that, would that be something that was for that? And now, we're just enhancing that to be able to do this technology throughout the district? Or are we still looking at that $517,000 line?
Tom, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, maybe Henry might want to chime in here as well. It's my, my understanding is that Henry has indicated that that $500,000 is going to sort of be subsumed within this appropriate special capital appropriation. Certainly, we had understood at the point that we made this request. I know there was some discussion between the superintendent and the mayor. And the superintendent, you know, said he understood that, you know, that that would probably, you know, that that would be necessary on the part of the city to do that. And certainly, a number of the items that were in that $500,000 were, in fact, related to the acquisition of these types of devices. So, you know, I'm not sure off the top of my head. Maybe Ralph knows how much was related to other items. But I think the majority, majority of the items in that $500,000 would have been these sorts of items. Is that correct, Ralph?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the other things that we had in there were some security procurements, phone, phone systems, just some updates, and also projectors, like replacements of our old smartboards in different places. So, we're, we're going to make sure that we do, we can with what we have this year to make that all happen.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, I just want to mention briefly, you know, the Norwalk Public School System has made such tremendous progress. And it's because we, some of you who have been here from the very beginning, others who have come on board since, we've made significant investments, probably more than ever before, not only in the school infrastructure, but in technology, in helping the schools, Norwalk Public Schools, implement their strategic plan. You know, we in Norwalk always compare ourselves to the surrounding towns and the educational system they have. Well, this brings us up to speed with them relative to our technology and giving the young people what they need to succeed. We know how important it is. And that's why when the superintendent approached me and asked for these items for K through three, we know how critical it is that a young person be reading at grade level by grade three. This will help enhance their ability to do that. We have challenges in a Norwalk Public School System that our surrounding towns don't have, with English language learners, young people living at or below the level of poverty, people, kids going to school hungry perhaps and coming home and going to bed hungry. We can't expect that they're going to achieve